We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with a prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings we've received. Give us strength, courage, and a clear vision as we use our gifts to serve you. We pray that you oversee the safety of our village employees and volunteers as they do their jobs. Bless our residents with safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and a great quality of life. We thank you for those people who are invested in the well-being of our community. We pray for protection of our military personnel and their families, especially those that were injured and lost their lives during recent events. It is in your most and best blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everyone. We have a fairly big agenda tonight. We'll try to get through it in a decent amount of time. May we have roll call, please?
Baker.
Here.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Hedley.
Here.
Jones.
Yes.
You have the July 17th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections? If there aren't...
Mayor.
Yes.
At the bottom of the Water and Sewer Committee, it says that we decided that Barth will contact Ken Kearns and MHD, try to find solutions to council's concerns. Did you?
I'm reading the final minutes here. Excuse me. Well, we had a meeting with, and I can talk about that when I get to my water sewer report.
All right.
I make a motion to approve a minute.
I would second.
Roll call, please.
Jones. Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask one more question? On the mayor's report, it said we were talking about the main society down there. In the council last quarter, the money collected from dog tags went, no one had it answered. Did anybody ever find that out?
I did not.
Okay.
We will go on to the approved bills list. You had a list in your packet, and then there's some on the table tonight on another piece of paper that Cheryl got in the mail today that she would like approved with the ones that were already in your packet. Are there any questions about the bills?
Yes. Well, my first question, and Ken said that we would question it, so I didn't want to break his heart. A driveway out there, that's what we paid for labor only for that.
And whatever materials and stuff he had other than the actual cement. I don't know how many guys he had helping or any of that.
Wow.
Big driveway.
Yeah, I don't know how we ever agreed to do something like that, but I don't have
any other questions, Mayor. Thank you.
I had a question then. Police ammunition, is that a discounted rate where we buy that? We do have the ammo can here in Nixville. I mean, is that something? I know the police chief's not here, though. Ask Mike.
Do you believe he considered a discounted rate from a supplier on one?
Okay.
Though I would imagine if we take that quote to ammo can, they would be able to do something.
Probably by local, might be.
Any other questions about bills on the list?
I move to approve the bills. Second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Epstein.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. Dell Elder back there anywhere? I don't see her, but, okay. Maybe she'll show up. Diane Eggly would like to address council about a problem in her neighborhood. Diane, could I get you to come to the podium, please?
I went around to the neighborhood and got all the signatures closest to me on Sue Wilson's property. She's growing corn in her side yard, tomatoes, and I have pictures here that was taken today of her backyard. It looks like a junkyard. And it's lowering her property value. All the neighbors are fed up with it. It's causing mosquitoes and everything else. She's got a camera in her upstairs window watching all the neighbors.
We did, I did share, we put in the council packet the signed paper that you sent to us, so they all have a copy of that. And Mike Bailey told me, brought me copies of letters that were, one was sent to her on August 28th regarding the removal of litter and tires.
She's moved her tires from the front yard to the back of her shed. I saw them Sunday.
And he said she had just covered them or something, you know?
No, you can see them.
Okay. And then August 4th, he sent her another letter stating, I guess a follow-up to the first letter of July 20th, they stating that the tires needed to be removed from the property or placed inside a building out of sight. This is not done. You're in violation of a nuisance. And it pretty much just applies to, it looks like to me, tires.
You know, it's breaking down our value of home. We want to refinance our house, they're going to look at all your neighborhoods, and that's how they value your home, how much your house is worth. I've been through it. Now, myself, I just paid $425 because I couldn't get the railroad to do anything to cut down trees on the railroad. The weeds are this high. I keep spraying them. They won't do nothing about it. They're right behind my property. I'd done that in January. It's not my place to cut down trees, but I don't want this in my yard. I keep my yard clean and everybody else around the neighborhood, but this one. She had a sewer dug up a year ago. She brought in some dirt. We thought she was going to cover up the hole and no the piles like this. She's got plants piled on top of it, growing out of it.
And then she's taken her sidewalk and laid out on the...
She'd removed the sidewalk.
And they're big, nice, they're chunks, they're big squares.
But she's removed the sidewalk and it's laying out between the sidewalk to the street.
On the city property. Now, I just forked out $900 this summer myself and fixed mine. You know, that's the rules.
And she has to have a sidewalk?
I don't have that kind of money, but I done it.
And has Mike, you know, been on that? I addressed, I talked to Mike about the sidewalk issue, and he, he had already sent her a notice that it needed to be repaired, but, you know, it kind of went along with all those others that gave people a year to repair their property. But he told me he was going to send her a notice and give her 30 days to get it taken care of.
I thought in our sidewalks ordinance that once you removed it, you had, you only had a certain time frame to repair it.
And that's probably why he's telling her she needs to have it done in 30 days. But, you know, it's been that way a long time, unfortunately.
You know, my grandparents had a garden in their backyard. We had two of them. She's got chickens. She's got them in the house now.
God.
She's got two dogs. You don't ever see them out to take a pee, so you can imagine what the inside of the house looks like. So...
We don't have much luck with the health department condemning properties or anything.
Because it's awful.
Is there any more ordinance? Is there anything we can do to... I'm not aware of anything that we can do about her choosing to grow produce in her front yard, but definitely that litter.
All the way around our house. We don't care.
Yeah. The litter and all that kind of stuff and the junk we're seeing in the pictures, I would think that, which his one letter did address litter, but it looks like it's still there, too. Well, thank you, Diane, for bringing it to our attention, and I don't know, we'll have to figure out, I guess we'll have to ask the advice of our solicitor.
Can't the nuisance committee visit that?
I would think so.
Some of those items certainly would fall under there.
I mean, nuisance committee, go down and talk to them rather than send a letter, that might help.
I actually went down and visited her last year and got a tour.
That worked out well.
Yeah. It was interesting. Yep, we'll see about the nuisance board bringing that one up. Thank you. Okay, we will go on then with the boards and commissions. You have in your packet the park board meeting minutes from July 19th. We have Bell here. Does anyone have any questions for her? When is the pool closing?
August 18th.
How's the attendance been last couple weeks?
Well, it's trying to please.
On the minutes file, you have, we need to order weed killer, seven five gallons, seven five gallon buckets of Primatol. Then I seen in the expenses where we just paid $600 or $800 for weed killer. Are we done? Are we, are we in compliance with our, with our water wells right there and we're using all this much?
Yeah, we know where we can spray them.
Okay.
Adventure Alley looks nice since we got all that mulch down there.
Yeah, one question. I had somebody contact me. Golf carts in the park, are they allowed to park in the handicap areas up there where the concrete? Okay, the person was misinformed, and I said, "Well, I don't understand why not. You're a car with license plate on your golf cart. If you're a handicap, you have a handicap sticker, I don't know why you wouldn't be able to park in the handicap spots." And they said they totally were not allowed to. They had to stay in the stone parking lot. They weren't able to drive up there by the little boys' baseball diamonds.
And we discussed it, because some of them want to park around that by the last corner.
Right. But they can park in the handicap spots if they're handicapped. Okay. I'll let them know that.
Thank you. Have a good vacation.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Any other boards and commissions right now?
There's ordinance, but I'm not on ordinance, but the Water Sewer Committee met. Get a lot of paperwork today.
Yeah, we do. 7:31.
Yep. Diane, there's only one.
Do you want this? You got it?
Nope, I found it. Took a look at two, like I said, on items one and two there with adjustments for two different people in the area. Our concern right now, and we had a meeting, we had talked to Ken Kearns in regards to Underground Utilities want a three-week extension. They sent it in very late. We sent you the letter. If everybody read it. You have a letter attached with the Underground Utilities request, and then we had a, we had Ken Kearns address it back to them on the 31st in regards to their extension. We received it a couple days prior to their contract ending. They're still working out there. Mike Pratt, I believe, has not responded to Ken Kearns' letter, so we asked Troy, Ken had talked to Troy about, you know, where we stand, do we have any leg to stand on if they just keep working, working, working? They said they about had another three weeks to go from their letter.
They'll be done. I bet they're done this week.
We hope. We hope. The other concern is with the lighting and the lights being put back in from AEP. We had to address that with Underground Utilities and ask them when those are going to be put back, because you put the asphalt in, the grass seeds in, you know, we don't want that tore back up again. So, I know they're working with them and getting those replaced. As for the entire project out there, you know, we talked as a committee and with Ken Kearns, and I know we all had concerns about cement, culverts, swell ordinances. We're requesting an ordinance that we, no one touches their swells once they are done. Pipes are in place, driveways are in place. We want those things to run cleanly and smoothly and be designed for what their purpose is. Address that. We decided, you know, the project was in place, it's almost done. It'd be tough to go back in and start tearing up concrete if anything, you know, hopefully if it does break, or if it does break, you know, they have responsibilities too in there and to see what caused it. But we want this project to be completed in a timely manner, effectively, efficiently, and move forward. So, do they have any questions on that? We also addressed the grease and grease ordinance in town with some of the businesses and factories. We were asking Jeff and Kent kind of to see if, what we can do with training, if we can go in and inspect those places at a given period of time and what license there would be, or, you know, if we had to go in and take a look at some of their issues. That stuff with the laterals and everything, it backs up the laterals, it finally gets into the main. It's caused some issues over the last couple of years in certain areas of town. It's kind of hard to find out who's the culprit at times if there's shared laterals, and if it does get in the main and is causing a main issue, well, you might have several entities creating that problem. So, through investigation, you'd have to go back and try to find out who's doing it. And with this, we might have some more legs to stand on.
One of the things was like an annual, one of the things I think you discussed was an annual inspection of the grease traps.
Right.
To maybe prevent, or, you know, maybe prevent grease and oils from getting in the sewers.
And there's companies out there that do that. Our thought was if we can have our own crews do it and be, have customer service and kind of go in there and check with what they're doing and how they're doing it, you know, that might be an easier way to do it instead of having them put it back on their shoulders with the expense and/or what we think they need done.
Did you get an email from Ken this morning that, Ken, I think you were included on it, too, that said that the ball was in our court for deciding about the extension? Did I read that right?
Yeah. I was just going to ask what we're doing. If we're okay with it, fine. If not, then we're going to figure out what we're doing.
Well, we don't like how they approached us with it, you know, a couple days before the project is supposed to be due, and we get this letter from them. This should have been done. They knew they weren't going to be done by the 31st. You know, there's no way it wasn't going to happen.
And the real problem with it is not that they got delayed or whatever, it's that everybody associated with it knows that they weren't working Fridays and that they were leaving early some days and all that nonsense. They were busting their tails, and they got some weather events and said, "Hey, we should, you know, that timeline was reasonable, but, you know, we missed seven days because of rain, but every other day we could work, we worked, and some days we worked till seven or eight at night and we still can't get it done." I suspect people would be a little more sympathetic and say, "Hey, you know, stuff happens."
They missed four days because of the weather.
Yeah. Like I say, because of July 24th letter, it says on their second sentence throughout the project, they've lost several days of productive work due to unfavorable weather conditions.
Four.
Yeah. Several doesn't allow to three, three weeks of extension.
But, but I, but then on the backside, it mentions liquidated damages began July 29th, so I assume that, well, until unofficial responses provided, Underground Utilities is on notice in accordance with Article 4, Article 11. Liquidation damages began July 29th and will be assessed until such time the project is completed and substantial completion notice is issued.
Well, I think you have taken consideration. They had to, they spent probably 10 days at least trying to find different things so they got that thing started right. Otherwise, if you don't start it right, where they were at down there on 18th, and work your way back, I mean, it's a nightmare no matter what you do. And there were a lot of issues there unforeseen, so I don't have a problem giving extension.
I guess we need to give them an answer, right, Mike?
Yeah, they would like to know, I guess. Ken Kearns would like to know if we're okay with it, and, like I said, any liquidated damages, you know, if we want to be reimbursed. I know we're paying Ron Parker lots of money and the MHD back and forth.
Yeah, the problem with that, though, is Ron's the person that's here locally.
Right.
I mean, theoretically, he's going to be here regardless of whether that job's going on or not.
True.
Because he's overseeing the other jobs that are going on.
He's been going back and forth.
Yeah. So, I mean, in reality, if you want to argue liquidated damages, his, him being here is not an extra cost because we're paying for him to be here even if that job ends today.
For everything.
Right, right, true.
Are we paying, I think I've been asked this before, are we paying full tilt on him to be there and full tilt for him to be down there?
I don't know the answer. Splitting his time. Splitting his time.
Do you have a, do you have a spot can?
I don't know what our damages are. That's the sad point. We've had other contracts, and I forget if it was North or South Tower, it had spelled out, because we got paid $600 a day for whichever one it was, because the contractor didn't have it done, and we could not use the tower till we had it done. In this case, we've, the sewer and water lines are working, the swales are working, so I'm not sure what our damages actually are other than aggravation for them directing their feed. I don't know how you put a dollar value on.
And I checked this Friday, you know, we're with this extension and everything. I thought maybe they'd work Friday. Nice day. Nope, not out there. How are you going to make somebody work? You know, it's their set 40, 40, 10 days hours.
I would say 30 hours.
Yeah, it is. Different with the other company.
They work in our days, straight through seven to five.
Yep.
But unless you heard anything different at the end of the day, wasn't the last, you're going to try to finish seeding, grading, and all that on talking north side, maybe even pave towards the end of this week. But that might have changed because that's the last I heard Friday. I didn't hear anything today.
I talked to Mike today, and he told me they want to be done, you know, with the seeding on both sides, but on the seeding on, I guess we'd say Dave's side.
I call that the north side, even though it's probably not the right.
They want to have that all done.
South side's done.
Yeah, clear down to Haven. And he'll get it done. They worked hard today.
And I did talk to the AEP rep. They're going to not come in till everything's done, so...
I think that'll be, you know, kind of just a procedure.
Are they going to cross the ditch toward the road? Are they going to be on the backside? Do you know, Kent?
They'll stagger them again like they were, so they'll run underground.
Clear out to the edge of the street like they were?
Last I knew, that's what they're doing, because you're not getting the arms, you're getting those old, I call them Chinese hats. Well...
I mean, but they'll have to go across the ditch, trench it in, right?
Yeah. And when I pointed out, why didn't Underground schedule this like a month ago? Well, they wanted to do all their finished grading work. I said, "I understand that," but I was going to get tore up by EEP. Well, they'll have to put it back, right? So, whatever. So, it just adds to the aggravation factor that...
Aren't the wires right there at the edge of the street?
No. No, they got to, they're going to, they're going to put them on bigger, they're going to put them on bases this time, and then they'll have to trench all the way back. So, they'll be going through the swale and up through people's yards now to connect them, so...
Oh, my goodness.
They one-directional bore all that?
I bet they do.
Hmm, I bet not. I bet they trench.
You think they're going clear back to the transformer for each light?
Where else they going to go?
Because they cut the wire off right at the property line. I saw them do it.
Is that where they went?
Yeah.
They can splice it back in, fine. I mean, I don't know those details. I assume they had to go all the way back to the transformers. But even so, they'll be messing up the swales that just got put in.
Do we need a, do we, Mike, do we need a decision about this?
Yeah, I would like to have a, yeah, I mean, to make it official, I mean, with the extension and everything, and we're close with Ken, and, like I said, hopefully they get it done here in the next week or so.
Now, if you come in there in blacktop, that isn't going to affect any, they don't have to go across the road. All that stuff is on both sides, right?
Right. They'll just mug the road up if they're crossing that ditch when we got wet water, wet weather.
Mm-hmm.
You need a motion for what?
When's the road?
I make a three-week extension.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Do you want it, do you want it with liquidated damages?
No. Not if they're okay with the extension.
Okay.
Yes, if you want to give them an extension. No, if you don't want to give them an extension. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, we have a first and a second, is that correct? Okay, roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
No.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. Mike, more on the Water Sewer Committee. Anything else?
Jesse had sent in a water quality report. It's in the back of your pack, well, it's on your desk tonight, not in the packet, so if anybody has any questions on that, we appreciate her doing that, giving that to us.
And I like the comments on the back.
Yep, comments are good. But I know the water and sanitary personnel and street for that matter, they've been doing a lot with all this construction going on around town. They're called to different places. There was a staff who, I guess, was some water issues here last week. We appreciate the patience of the residents with all the detours and different things happening in the community. I know it's a mess, you know, but we're doing it for a reason to better the infrastructure. Just be patient, be courteous to your neighbors and other drivers on the road and yards. Don't drive through yards and cut people off and take heat to the detours. They're there for a reason. We know local traffic, you need to get to your house or a business, and that's understandable, but just to not take heat to those detours and blow through somebody's property or anything, that's not good. I know the police are watching out for that.
That's all they did. You wouldn't even know there was any road closed signs on it?
I know. I've heard about it and seen it, and the police have been checking.
Again, I couldn't believe how disrespectful a lot of the, you know, I was standing up there. I watched them. Village people, Nixville people.
Cutting right through.
Cutting through. Victor over at the Shell station, he didn't mind being slow, but he hated everybody going through there.
Right.
The people I saw getting gassed on Sunday, because your truck was up there, people I saw went up through there, just got gas, or they went down to Dollar General.
And is our, are police ticketing them if they're...
They weren't ripping through these plays. I sat there for a while.
I'll be darned.
There's the chief.
I have been up there every day.
I saw you standing over there on the corner.
Every day.
I saw you over there on the corner.
And I stood and watched. I had both neighbors on both sides sit there and counted cars, just Sunday, they counted cars, how many come through there.
I'm there 10 minutes. I didn't see that man.
In 10 minutes, you didn't see anybody? Well...
I was there for five on Wednesday, and I saw them.
And I don't need glasses. You're the one up there, you'll be able to survey.
I did, and I just told you, and you disagreed with me.
Didn't disagree. I told you I didn't see any.
Look around.
Tyler, my opinion.
Anyway, since our chief is here, that's all right. Very busy.
Chief, was there anybody cutting through up there?
Where?
At the Shell station corner?
Shell station, I'm sure there were.
Oh, you're not aware of it either?
I've been away at, I've been away at class for a week. I worked Sunday. That's all I've been in.
We're asking people to be courteous of the detour signs, be patient. They're there for a reason, it's for safety and everything else, but be courteous, too, of the business owners and the property owners, not to cut through and yards and, you know, if you guys see them, you're going to warn them or ticket them or do something if you see them.
Whichever's preferred.
Absolutely. If you're in that area, the same time they're doing it. So, we have faith in you and...
We spend a lot of time directing traffic and trying to take care of the traffic problem during the past probably week.
Right. We appreciate that. I know, like I said, a lot of the city, the streets, the sanitary, you guys put a lot more extra time in here the past couple weeks getting, getting stuff done, so, thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank Kent and the committee and the employees that have come for those meetings, all these meetings we've had regarding the projects. It's been time-consuming, but we've been right on it.
Mike's done a good job.
Yep, he has, yep. We have something here from the ordinance committee.
I reported on that the last meeting.
All right.
That was just the minutes.
All right. Are there any other committees that would like to report on anything that maybe we don't have minutes for? Okay, then we'll go on to the administrator's report.
So, this we've taken care of already. I guess the one issue from the last meeting was about fire department railing. I did end up turning it into the claims. I did end up turning it into the claims, we did get two thousand dollars back on that. Uh, the East Cornelia Sewer Project, that's gonna start sometime after Labor Day. Back to the part, did meet with the architect and the engineer rep last Thursday, I can't remember the day, it was August third. And evidently they had switched gears on the architect, that's why that was getting held up. At this point, he thought within a couple of weeks, we should have the plans to review. And she'll finish up the application for the fifty thousand dollars once they get final cost estimates. And then general pickup, still not sure when it's gonna be. I don't want to do it while some of the streets down south are totally torn up because then those people won't get a chance to get their stuff out. So for the moment, I've not really set a date, it might not even be till October. I don't, I'm gonna wait and see how Nagels progress here on South Main before pulling the trigger on that. Just cause I don't want to be in their way and vice versa. I know a lot of people are Facebooking, wondering when it's coming, but they're just gonna have to wait, cause I don't know. If their crystal ball works better than mine, they can give me a call. I know it won't be in the first or second week of September at least, there's no way. Or at least first full week of September. So anyhow, people just have to relax on that. Only other thing, and I, some of you aren't gonna know about this, but I can at least get feelings from Water Sewer, that water pollution control loan fund application that's due the end of the month. You wanna try to submit something or not?
You have something you wanna spend it on or?
I don't. I mean, I rea, I really don't, I don't have any good separation project that would be worth doing. I mean, I sent that email out to you and they are a pain in the neck, but if you wanted me to try to get one in, this is for next year. Application, yeah. Now, odds are on this one, we wouldn't get the free three hundred and some thousand that they're paying for East Cornelia, but I, I really can't think of a good separation project to use it on.
And if you don't apply, can we get a credit for the next year, if we have a bigger one?
No, this is the yearly.
Would it be if we're changing directions on Chicago Avenue, would it, could it go towards that?
You have to know what your plan is, cause I have to be an engineer's estimate and we don't know what it, so I mean, to have it done by August thirty first, you're.
Uh, true.
You're gonna be about two, call it three weeks max. Well, if I knew, I'll just pick Rock Street, I mean, we're not gonna do anything there. If I knew it was gonna be Rock Street from behind or between High Street and Smith Street, it'd be pretty simple to come up with. But I, I thought about it when Roberta sent the initial message and I don't know of any fairly simple separation projects and I've been working on next year's budget already, it might not hurt to take a year off.
And that don't ding us at all?
Some money.
Is that, yeah, but that doesn't ding us at all if, have we applied for that type of grant every year or is that something that's off and on?
We have applied to be nominated before and then we've never followed through. Or not never, we've not followed through on some in the past, just cause things have changed, so, no, it's not, if you skip it, you're lost forever.
Cause if you apply for the grant, we still have to spend a lot of money to match it.
Yeah, I said, I doubt we'd get a free ride like we are for Cornelia.
I think a lot of rest for you, for group.
That's funny, cause I'm dropping off our issue two application, assuming you pass that tonight, Wednesday. And that's for a small water line for next year, but the budget will be able to handle that. I don't have any sewer projects planned at all, everything currently gone on should be wrapped up.
Wonderful.
Nice.
I'm happy to hear that.
I think that's a smart call, Kent.
So Phase Two does not start until?
P three or? I was looking at, yeah, maybe his memory's better. I know we have to be done with Phase One by October twenty nineteen. And then Phase Two would be picking up, call it twenty twenty, so we've got a couple of years. Since they let us put, well, I still don't have the paperwork letting us push Chicago Avenue back into Phase Two. Otherwise, yeah, we'd be under the gun to get that done, you know. Anywho, that's my plan, if you have any other ideas, let me know.
Thank you, Kent. Does anyone have any questions for Kent about anything? We will do the solicitor's report.
First thing I have, and Cheryl, I think I emailed you another copy of the actual numbers in there, maybe I did after. Do you recall off the top of your head what the, maybe somebody else does here, what the new?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve?
No, twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, twelve thousand, and the hourly rate, nobody ever told me that, I assume that would stay the same.
I would assume.
Cause there's, it gives, in the Fire Chief.
But you'll still get hourly for trainings, is that correct, or is the salary?
Training and order.
Okay.
That shouldn't change.
That'd stay the same, whatever it was at before, but, this is, first reading in ordinance two thousand seventeen dash fifteen, uh, by caption only, an ordinance increasing the wages for the Fire Chief positions within, with the village of Hicksville. Next is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, uh, third reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to rehire Troy Essex as the village's solicitor for the village of Hicksville.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Troy Essex.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Next is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fifteen, a, a third reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into a contract with Cokermyre Design Group Inc. to provide engineering and design services for the elevated water storage tank siting plan and elevation tank design and declaring an emergency.
On that one, you really won't have to declare.
Okay.
This is the third reading.
It's the third reading.
They'll wait thirty days, depending on the vote, and before you vote on that, and, cause it'll slip my mind totally. My plan on this, if it passes, would be for, since I wouldn't be able to sign anything from September at least anyway. Probably spend most of next year doing the site plan, which is at seven thousand whatever ballpark. Probably not start any design work till twenty eighteen because they're getting with the way the budget's looking. It might be kinda tight to do them both, and I don't know how long it'll take to do that site work. But I, I would talk to them if this passes and get all that worked out.
I saw move on that resolution.
Second.
Roll call please.
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Nope.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Next is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, a first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into a contract with Vernon Nagel Inc. for the North Main Street water line replacement and declaring an emergency.
And that one should be, just because of the O P W C timing.
I move we suspend the rule.
Second.
Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yeah.
Baker?
Yep.
So second, third reading by caption only, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into a contract with Vernon Nagel Inc. for the North Main Street water line replacement and declaring an emergency.
Do we know what fund we are filling in the blank with?
Get with me in the morning, cause I do have it spelled out, I, I don't want to sit here and see tonight and have it wrong.
Okay.
So move.
I second that.
Roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
What's this on?
North Main Water Line.
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Next is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash seventeen, a first reading by caption only, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required, and this is what Kent said today, would like passed as an emergency.
And this is just authorizing the mayor to let me submit the application, we might not get any money. And if we don't, then that might affect even doing a project next year, I mean, this, this is more of a formality, I mean, it's.
Move we suspend the rules.
I will second.
Roll call please.
Jones? Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
So next would be second and third reading by caption only, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required.
And so move.
I second that.
Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Next is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash eighteen, a first reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Fines County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year two thousand eighteen. And then Cheryl, on these weed and, those have to be in emergency?
Next, next meeting.
Next meeting, okay, so let's do the first reading of Resolution two thousand seventeen dash nineteen, by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville Ohio, uh, directing the Fines County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent water and sewer bill on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A and declaring an emergency, assuming we'll have our final list.
Yep.
Don't we already have an ordinance?
We have to do it every year.
Every year.
Then attach the list of properties.
So that it'll assess them. Uh, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty, a first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville Ohio directing the Fines County Auditor to assess and enter the delinquent cost of weed and grass mowing on the tax duplicate of the properties described in Exhibit A. Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty one, uh, a resolution to assess streetlight mileage, does that need to be?
I think so, does it? It, September is usually when it needs to be in, same as these other ones.
It's the same mileage, right?
Yes, same as last year.
Uh, Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty two, first reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into a contract with Werler Inc. to provide residential refuse and recycling collection services and declaring an emergency, that being, we talked the last time, I've talked a couple of times with Michelle from Werler. Um, obviously, they need us to sign the contract before they'll start ordering the carts and there's about a six to eight week, uh, lag time on getting those and we're looking at starting at the first of the year, so, um.
Last, Kent and I talked about this last week and Kent wondered who had the contract.
I just emailed it to Cheryl because there was a couple of revisions that they, and they just emailed it to me this afternoon.
So Kent hasn't seen it?
He has not. It's the same, it's the exact same as was presented originally, except for we changed the, and I did the, I looked at it today, they just wrote in exactly what I asked them to, they changed the multi-unit from two units to three units so that it was consistent with our existing ordinance, so triplexes and under basically would be covered by this, quadplexes and above are commercial accounts with their own deal. And then I added in language that said in addition to whatever it already said that they were gonna be providing to the village for their trash pickup, that they agreed that they would handle taking all the trash out of the downtown dispensers and handling that. And then I notified them that we had agreed that option two for the bulk pickup was the, was the option. Other than that, it's identical to the one.
Okay.
I move we suspend rules.
Second.
Roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Do you want to make this an emergency?
Yeah.
Need to.
Okay, well, no, I just want to make sure I didn't know if you want to give residents more time than you used to.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
All right.
It's fine.
Well, it says it, so.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
So second, third readings, a resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty two, by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville Ohio to enter into a contract with Werler Inc. to provide residential refuse and recycling collection services and declaring an emergency.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And, last is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty three, first reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. I think that information's in here somewhere.
It's on the back.
Oh, on the back. And then, on the other things, uh, nothing new to report on the Sherwood income tax collection, Ulti's trailer park. I'm not sure who all I passed this along, but I did have a conversation with Mark Haver. He had gone a brief period of time without speaking to his dad about it because of some family health issues. Um, and he was going to sit down and meet with him, and the one thing that I know, uh, and this impacts two things because we had talked about the trailer parking in addition to property out there for, you know, potential drainage issues. Um, he was gonna talk to him about both of them, I again expressed our lack of being in a hurry on the trailer park issue and definite being in a hurry on the, on the other issue. I think as far as the trailer park, um, he was looking, he was gonna have a conversation, I think, with accountants, people like that about potential tax implications to him as far as donating the land, selling the land, cleaning it up himself, things of that nature. Um, that was the last conversation I had with Mark and I haven't heard back from him, but I'm likely to see him tomorrow. And will inquire of him again as to that.
And so the other subject?
Yeah, no, between he and I, it was, and he had told, what he told me about the trailer park, he had not spoke within further about the other subject, but was going to, so I'm likely to see him tomorrow and when I do, I'll give email update or something.
Thank you, Troy. Next we'll go on to the department head reports. Police chief, Dick, anything?
I don't have anything to bring before council, unless there's any questions to add.
I had a question, um, on the bills, we had, uh, police ammunition was on there, do you get a really good rate through, going through this company or have you ever checked out like ammo can?
We've checked, we've checked different companies before, yeah.
I knew we had one local in Hicksville that sold ammo, I didn't know if it's.
We have done some business with them, but generally, prices are usually better to do that.
Okay.
Fire chief Kramer?
I have a question for chief. Uh, the dumpster on Edgerton Street, how can, how can they do that?
That, well, I'd say that happened last week, I forget the name of the guy that called or the company he was with. He goes, can we bring a dumpster for one day and empty whatever house it is? I said, yeah, if you're emptying the house, fine, have at it, that was like last Thursday, I thought it was still down there today.
I had complaints about that over the weekend.
I'll call Werler tomorrow and find out, cause I think that's whose dumpster it is.
I think so too.
And I'll find out who the, it was a property management keeper that called me. Yeah, it'll be out of there in one day, so I'll.
It's over the full line.
I figured there's probably other people using it, but, no, I'll find out tomorrow, Werler should be able to tell me.
Because there's a no parking sign two houses down.
It was supposed to be one day or?
And you get, I called it in here last week.
We checked on it and we're told the administrator gave them information to do it.
Boy, I got calls about that too, and what a dangerous situation to let, especially with the detours.
I don't know, for one day, I figured, okay, fine.
Right. So you can't trust people.
Oh, wow.
I mean, really.
Any other questions, Sheila?
No.
Fire chief Kramer?
I would like to put Cody Royer into the EMS chief position and pay adjusted accordingly.
Did this come to the committee at all?
Nope.
I was just asking, cause I didn't know about any meetings.
Okay.
Normally, we let the chief make that decision.
We addressed in the committee what, who was gonna be in that position, we wasn't sure just yet. If you wanted to go to committee first, we'll go to committee.
I wouldn't have a problem with it, I think we can discuss it right here.
I wouldn't have a problem.
I will make a motion that we put Cody Royer in as the EMS chief, I'm sure he'll do a fine job. That, I have no doubt about that.
I would turn the mayor's recommendation for a motion that we put Cody into the chief's position, recommend.
I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Jones?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes. Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And I would like a recommendation from the mayor to put Dylan Evans on as a firefighter.
Who was the name of?
Dylan Evans. He's Dusty's younger son.
Great. EMT too?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to put Dylan Evans on the fire department pending good drug screen background check and physical and all that stuff that's required.
I'll make that motion on the mayor's recommendation for Dylan.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Jones.
Yes.
Headley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Bassett.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Be later be asked.
Are you fully staffed now?
That list is up to twenty-eight.
And what's the magic number?
Thirty-one. So we have three openings, we have one pending.
Speaking of, what's our EMT at too?
Six.
Three full-time and three volunteers.
And I would like to thank everybody that came and supported us yesterday at the Taco Bar.
Very good.
Hope everybody enjoyed it.
That's great, thank you.
Any questions?
I'd say anybody that's out there interested in looking into being any volunteer EMT, we need you, department need you, people and the residents need you. So I don't know if you get with Scott or Cody, they would direct you or lead you into how to get trained and the classes and we definitely need some help, so.
Have you looked into first responders? I think I called you a couple of weeks ago.
I haven't followed up on that yet.
It's interesting what you could do. Firemen have to have more training, but then you get probably with one EMT per run.
It's still not an overnight fix, but.
Yeah, it takes time. Thanks. Let's go.
Cody, EMS chief, do you have anything to report to council?
I do now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Valerie, park director, do you have anything to report to council? Okay, thank you.
Before we get to you, you talked about alleys.
I did, I talked to him. What can we do? You said there's no restrictions, but.
You're off either. Well, you can go to a committee and get back to me on it. If you want to make it one way, it's going to still boil down to enforcement. You leave it the way it is.
Well, I think for Mr. Stark.
We've made, we've done it before.
But.
If that, we made that one-way alley behind Wendell there, behind the trailer.
But it isn't no more.
That, well, no, we took it down because the property owner didn't want it anymore either, the ex-property owner. But nobody paid attention to that either. People would blow in both ends.
Right, they didn't.
So I'm not going to waste time and effort putting signs up there, going to do absolutely no good.
Well, that was what I wanted to discuss about the ordinances about, we're going to have to get together and get rid of some of these ordinances because they're not being enforced at all.
Well, and you're.
And it's silly to have them.
What, what, what ordinance are we talking about that's being enforced?
Well, we have the Downs-spout is one of them and the pool ordinance and that's all I can think of right off the, no.
Those two are police department.
No, I didn't necessarily mean him, I just mean all of these.
When you look, when you look, you assume you.
You shouldn't assume.
Well, see, then you might as well address Rock Street. I said a lady pulled right out in front of me, righty.
I see people go the wrong way all the time on Rock Street.
There is no one-way.
It's not a one-way, it just says you can't turn left or right. It's not a dead end, but it doesn't say one-way. That's part of the problem. Because my understanding is it's never been, it's never been a decision made, it's just that it's unsafe to turn left or right, so there's no left turn, no right turn, but there's no one-way street sign there. We've written tickets before for people turning left or right off of there. I wrote my first OBI here because a person turned right up out there. So it isn't forced when we see it.
Right.
But there's no one-way street sign there.
Can you block off that street, concrete?
When that first came up, ODOT said no.
Going out?
Not unless we put a cul-de-sac in down there for people to turn around because you're button up to a state highway.
Well, I would like to see something done with the alley for two reasons, for the way they're driving up in the properties and the other one is for Mr. Stark, he's put a lot of time and money in his parking lot over there and they are just cutting right up through there and going to ruin it for him over a period of time. And he's done, he's fixed that up really nice over there.
How is that?
Little church behind the old grocery store.
So which end would you have trucks come in on?
Well.
They come in, I would say Jessie's end, Stark end, just to clarify. They come in on her end, they're, I'd be cutting that corner and still tearing stuff up.
Right, no matter what you do there.
And they come in on the Stark end, they're still going to swing into his driveway. Now that's an alley we can't vacate because we've got a sewer line and AEP's got poles.
And with the sewer line, it's okay to have all them trucks on there?
Happens all the time with every street in town.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if they were as thick as.
So why are they using the alley, why not their empty lots that they bought to pull in across the streets?
Doesn't count.
Well, you're talking the two empty lots where those two crummy houses.
Right, right.
That, I don't know.
He hasn't got that.
He does, they, they come in that way.
See, even turning onto Wendell from Hicks and Edgerton, those streets aren't made for my trucks either.
The poles are right up on the corner.
They're constantly tearing up the fair, fairgrounds outside yard.
And by strollers, I see they've cut up and.
Oh, yeah.
Almost taken the sign out, but I don't know.
Unless you close the alley somehow or other, even though AEP still needs it on it, so would we. He can't have somebody there twenty-four seven.
Yeah, we've, we've said numerous times in the area there and.
And I've called numerous times.
So I mean, for as far as us catching them, I suppose if we were to set a couple of blocks away and hide, maybe we would catch them doing it. But even then, we've talked, I've talked to Kent about where the actual alley is supposed to be and where the AEP poles are being the boundary and these guys are not violating or not going into private property. They're going into the right-of-way, yes, but they're not going into someone's yard or someone's yard. So what we can do enforcement-wise, I'm not really sure. There's no truck restrictions on that alley or anything. You have to allow trucks to make deliveries. They're making deliveries to the, to the factory there. So I'm not sure what we would do about keeping them on there as far as enforcement.
I think the guy that owns the cheese factory, he needs to be the one to stop it.
Well, we've talked to him about that and.
We've talked to him too and he says he's talked to the, the truckers about it, the trucking company and.
So they're not employed, they just bring in the mail?
Right, right.
They come from all over.
Yeah.
You talking about the bigger rigs or the smaller box trucks?
Semis, no.
The big ones.
The big ones.
The smaller box trucks can make the turns and, and get to his loading docks, but the eighteen-wheelers, and I've seen them down there, they've turned down here by the post office and they back up that way. It's the only way they can make the turns without going into people's yards, but they're using somebody else's parking lot. And that's not illegal, is it?
I don't know if that, is that private property there for the church?
Is it private property?
Is it? I'm asking.
Their parking lot would be, yes.
I'm sure it is.
And that's what they're cutting up?
We haven't gotten any calls from the church yet.
Here on, by NIMCO food, those corners aren't wide enough for all the semis to turn and you can see them button up against that, but.
So how many semis a day?
Don't, two's best? Probably. I'm going to say six.
Wow.
I'm probably high, but.
I would think he, well, I can't think of his name right now.
Nelson.
Nelson. Nelson. He should have a little pole, say hey.
He says he's talked to him. I went out and talked to him, I talked, tried to talk to each one of them, you know, they, they all say sure, we won't, no problem.
You think?
Uh, they did one time, the one did, but he said, it's not driving for them anymore. Mr. Hirschberger said that.
But I still think.
And he said, he was the boss of that company. He was the leader of that trucking company and he did it intentionally.
Yeah, that's wrong.
And that's.
Still think.
A lot of it right there, a lot of it can be avoided, it's just like, because my husband gets a little upset and goes out there and, we had the same trouble several years ago out front, Kent took care of that, put a no-truck sign out there because they were coming up in our front yard making the turn off of Maple Street Extension. And we even had the police down there where they had tire marks on the sidewalk, they were clear up into that. So Kent fixed that problem with the.
Well, if the ordinance committee thinks that you can come up with something, you want everybody, nah?
I don't know what our rights are, what we can, can't do. He says there is none and.
I'm like, there's nothing that I'm aware of right now, no.
Because I call when they're doing it. My husband calls.
Who do you call? Police?
Police.
And we've come out there and looked and, I mean, like I said, there's not, or even what, I talked to Kent about it, where the actual right-of-way is in the alley, the AEP poles are right at the edge. From what I've seen, nothing has gone beyond that point. Now actually, where the gravel is from looking at that and going with the measurements that the alley's supposed to be, the gravel isn't even in the right place to mark the alley, which is causing part of the problem because your grass has come out into that right-of-way quite ways, so it makes it look like they're really driving through the garden, but really they're still in the alley. I don't know what to tell you there.
Well, just keep calling and just keep drilling it.
Nelson, say hey. Now he came and wanted to rezone and we did it, so we got a problem now, let's try to get a rezone.
And I.
I'll make a contact.
Okay.
I have his number.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Can I bring up one thing there?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Downs-spouts.
Yeah.
Are we going to, on this new sewer that's in a lot of places now, are we going to make people hook to it?
We've talked about it the two years I've been on here and that's when we should just get rid of it because who's going to watch it? Who's going to babysit it? Who's going to go out and tell each person? You, you, you all got it.
Well, when that was being put in, in a couple of different locations, different ones come out and said, can I be, can I get in there? I said, that's a question for this guy. But we are saying that you have to get into it, if you have to take your sub-pump out, you can't pump it out in sanitary form like we've discussed in the Downs-spouts and other things. If that's the case, then we've done a big injustice to our citizens of this village because for some unknown reason to me, we put that sewer so deep that it's going to take a company like Nagel to come in here, you know, a company their size to come in and dig back down on that thing and put a tap in. So I guess what I'm saying, we haven't paved yet, so if there's any way you want to help the citizens by putting a tap on every other property line or some, I don't know.
Are they putting those in? Are they putting those in? Do you know? Like they did out on here? I didn't, I didn't think so. They're not making any laps. Okay, I didn't think so. Just a moment.
Did they do that on Pearl in Columbia?
It was the Ogen, Ogen they provided.
Those are the streets they tie in, everybody, they tied in because they see the old sanitary has a new storm, so they're using the best new taps. Already down on that.
You know, as long as I've sat on this council, you know, those two issues with Downs-spouts and, and sub-pumps in a community like this, it's been talked and talked and talked about over and over again. You know, certain people that do now have separation in front of their house, they can tie, they want to spend the money to run that lateral to, you know, that stormline, you know, they can do that.
But the cost of, of Joe Blow, anything that has been on this Brian Main Street, Beach Street project, the minimum is fifteen feet. The cave-ins are unbelievable and they're having good luck. I've seen them a lot worse. Some of these places, you know, they're thirty foot in the ground up there at Shell Station. You know, somebody to come in there with a big excavator like they're using to dig with and get down on that thing and have trench boxes, cord, you, you don't want somebody in there with an air hammer knocking a hole in it, you want a core board, good seal on the thing, brought up to a workable, workable height. Just wanted to see if anybody was thinking into the future that that needs done before because, you know, as soon as you get the street paved, and it's not going to happen, but let's just say twenty people go, hey, I, I want in there. I want my sewer and my, or my storm and sub-pump and all that stuff in there. So now we're cutting across the brand-new road that's going to be, exactly be a brand-new road because there's nothing left of the new, so it's going to be completely restructured again, which I was going to ask Kent how he's done on that. But, you know, to me, we're, we're not being fair to our, our buddies in town. What'd you come up with on paving?
He hasn't given me a figure yet, but if you're going to go back South Main Beach and all of those, if you're looking, it'll be. Yep.
I don't have unlimited pocketbooks here.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just saying that we've done an injustice by not doing it. We've done it on other streets. We didn't do it on the worst animal that we've done so far and probably the worst animal that will be done in this town at the depths that they are. And why they're that deep, I don't know. But to anybody that can, to be able to dig down on that is going to take a big horse that nobody around here, we've got local guys that, that with no doubt, can do what needs done, but they don't have the horsepower to go down that deep, trench box it, make the core boards, plus you're tearing up a brand-new street. I just wanted to make it so you knew what I was thinking.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to the auditor's report, or excuse me, the fiscal officer, oh, go ahead.
Before you go into that, we, we had some conversation a while back about the Huber and I had a call from Jim Schmidt today wanting to know what council's desires were, if they're going to participate in helping or not. And I talked to him about that. I might have mentioned it to you, Mike, the mayor I called today, but we've had conversations about that. He just wants to know what's council's, if they're for it or they're not. So that is why I brought it up.[1623.91]
Well, the finance did discuss it, what, a month ago on the projects? And we have helped the Chamber, not Chamber, the Veterans Memorial. The downtown park, the playground, Camp Leanne, Froggy Park, whatever. So what are they asking for the council?
If I understood the program right, it's three thousand for so many years.
That proposal came from someone just out of the blue that just made that suggestion. It did not come from a Huber board member or anybody else.
Jim is president of the Huber Board.
It didn't come from him. The email came from...
Larry.
Larry Coburn.
He was proposing-
It came to the Huber Board meeting.
Came to the council committee too.
Yeah.
Well, I think he was proposing twenty thousand dollars a year for three years, wasn't he?
No, it was three thousand for-
For three years.
Three thousand.
They need to know for, if we put it in for the budget for next year, which we're gonna start that in October.
Well, we also didn't come up with a line account we could take it out of legally.
Legally.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that we couldn't come up with.
And there's two, I guess there's two issues and one we've kinda already touched on with the Veterans Memorial and making a donation there, but, you know, how far government goes into propping up nonprofit organizations and things and, you know, where you draw the line. The other one is with that Veterans Memorial, we made like a one-time, like a donation and it wasn't a commitment over various years. So I'm not certain off the top of my head whether even legally we could justify agreeing to do that.
I mean, the Veterans Memorial was comprised of Hicksville and a lot of good people and our colony.
And so is the Huber. I'm not questioning the organizations at all. I guess I'm from a procedural format or technique. The committing to giving them so much money for such a period of time, be it as a donation or whatever, I'm not certain if we can legally commit to that type of program.
I brought it up for one reason, so we got an answer from council.
Yep, they should get an answer.
We give money to the CIC every year. Where's that money coming from? I mean, that's for job growth?
Revolving loans. Community development fund.
Right, right. You know, we always kinda question what they do, how they do, when they do, certain things in the, in the community. But it kinda fall into those lines. I mean, to me, the Huber is an asset for our community.
So you're saying we give a one-time gift with Mike?
I guess what I'm questioning is, we may need, before we actually commit into giving something, and even with the CIC, we're approving that every year on an every-year basis. We're not committing to some plan where we say, hey, CIC, we're gonna give you five thousand dollars a year for the next five years, like it's a contract type of thing. We're saying, you know, this is what you're asking for, we agree to give it, and then next year we have the same conversation.
Maybe we should look at maybe just giving a one-time gift. I would like to see us help.
And that may be a solution too.
That Huber brings a lot to Hicksville.
Yeah, it could have been a parking lot.
Could have been a bar. It could be a bar.
It was.
I know, it could still be.
Didn't know any of that.
But this is something I think we ought to put in the budget if we do this for next year, not just come up with whatever amount. So the committee-
And you gotta keep Cheryl happy about where it's coming from.
Well, I think number one, we need for you to find out whether we can legally do it and how we can do it so that we can all decide if we want to do it.
I guess we need to specify, are we gonna specify or do we care what it's gonna be used for? We don't wanna use it for their debt retirement, I don't think.
No, it would be operational, I'm sure.
Or something that would be-
Something needs to be fixed, I suppose.
They're trying to fix a brick wall.
They're doing a wall.
You know.
But what, when do we stop? I mean, that opens up the door to, let's say, Klein's staying. I mean, wouldn't it be nice to give them a twelve thousand dollar donation to help them keep this refresher here?
This is more a community-
This is more than a business. This is for business. I mean, where would the memorial be if it wasn't for the villages and the Eagles and good organizations and the commissioners and good people stepping forward and donating their monies? It wouldn't be there.
No, no, I think what Eric's saying though is, next time it's the Huber, next time it's the Senior Center, and next time it's the-
Mercy Home Hospital.
Well, even just like nonprofit, you know, we're gonna, I mean, there's-
I think the Huber's a different animal.
Many of them that are active in our community that provide good services to-
I've been a nonprofit maker my life, so, you know.
I think we're all here to serve the community, but I think the Huber does a good job of serving.
I agree, and I agree they do too.
It is something that would be, need to be put into the 2018 budget if we were going to do it, so... I guess we could turn that to the finance committee and-
And I'll look at the other end and you guys can start talking about it or whatever, what you're thinking, and I'll look into how we may be able to do it and where-
Michael, can you, in your chat with Schmitty, find out what he's thinking?
Well, it was three thousand dollars for five years, I believe.
I think you're right.
That's fifteen thousand. Ron had made the statement to me that maybe we should look at it like we did with the Veterans Memorial. Make it a one-time gift or donation, whatever, for a certain entity or for, you know, one of their line items on their budget. And go on from there. And we have supported something in the community. And we've thrown money at a lot of things that were a lot less important than that.
All righty, thank you. So fiscal officer's report, please.
First thing I have is the 2018 local government fund apportionment from the auditor. Her letter's on one side, it's the same percent as last year, but it's two thousand dollars less. And on the back is the motion. I just need someone to make it, to approve this.
I will make the motion to approve that. Auditor's 2018 report.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Gotta make sure I'm on the right page.
Yes.
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
My second motion Troy's gonna talk about.
Okay.
This, I've had a couple of conversations with the board about it, and the way it's worded on your paper, I'm gonna word it separately, how I want somebody to make a motion, but the process, let's just say we got a fundamental disagreement about what the law requires. The process required, and this is in regard to Mr. Hart's petition regarding the fifteen-minute parking. He got all the signatures and everything over to us. Cheryl did what she was supposed to, let it set for ten days, forwarded on to the Board of Elections. They did what they were supposed to, counted all the signatures, the valid ones, the invalid ones, determined what, what the number of signatures were, which then came back to Cheryl and was determined that that was enough to get it on the ballot. He was over the number required, not by many, but by a few. And so the way the law reads is, it says, once we determine that that's true, then the clerk is to certify it back to the Board of Elections and there to put it on the ballot at the next general election within ninety days or whatever. So it needs to be done now to get on the next election. There's nothing in the ordinance, and I've read it five, six, seven, ten times, or the materials that they rely on in the ordinance that says this council has to do anything relative to the particular situation. And I think where they're hung up on it is, many communities that have charters that aren't, that aren't operating on statutory form of government like we are, when they're, when it comes to referendum and initiative petitions, have included in their charter language, and I'm sure it's for financial reasons, that basically says if somebody meets the signature requirements on either an initiative or referendum, the council is required to bring it for a vote first because if it passes, then there's no need for the election and all the extra costs and everything associated with that. If it doesn't pass, then the council has to basically pass a second ordinance saying, we didn't approve it, Board of Elections, you guys put it on the ballot. Well, we don't have any provision like that that requires it, but they still keep expecting us to do stuff like this and to send them proposed ballot language, which, as I've expressed to multiple members and employees of the Board of Elections, is not our job, it's not our piece of legislation, it's Mr. Hart's piece of legislation. So in the interest of not compromising what I think is the right interpretation of the law, but not ever being accused of standing in the way of it getting on the ballot, what I would like you guys to do is basically consider a motion authorizing Cheryl to certify the ordinance back to the Board of Elections. And then they can, they can follow the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code as far as getting it on the ballot. And the difference with that is, it leaves out the language that's in this proposed motion that says we approve the question being submitted to the ballot. It's basically, Mr. Hart's done what he needs to do, Cheryl's done what she's done, needs to do, pass it back to the Board of Elections, and they can put it on the ballot and we'll see what happens when it's on the ballot.
So why not just deny it? Why doesn't the council just deny it?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we have to do anything. I mean, this is something Cheryl came up with. It doesn't matter what we do here, but for the purposes of, what I don't want to happen is to have us do something and then end up in some procedural mumbo jumbo that ends up in not being on the ballot and somebody coming down here saying we were the reason that it didn't get on the ballot. He's met the requirements, I've reviewed them all, it should be on the ballot. But it's not our obligation to say that it needs to be on the ballot. So I guess the code requires Cheryl to certify it back. Why don't you guys just do a resolution to basically tell her to do her job under the Revised Code section and certify it back to them and they can be happy with that.
And is there a cost added on the ballot?
I'm sure there is. I'm not sure.
I'm sure he does. We do?
Yep. I think it'll come back to us.
I don't want my name attached to anything on this.
Well, and that's why I reworded it because I, in my opinion, it's not, it doesn't matter, I don't know how any of you feel about.
Well, I think we should-
But I'm just saying, I'm not making an opinion, positive or negative, about the actual petition. But I guess what I'm saying is, not one person should, I mean, the council's not required to take any action that one person could interpret either way as being tacitly in favor of or against it. That's not our position.
Why not just drop it and let the election, if they're gonna put it on, let them do all the work, rather than us have to pass it down to them?
By law, she has to.
Well, she has to do that by law, so all I'm saying is, you guys pass a motion telling her to do what she's required to do by law and we'll end it at that.
Okay, so we can check this and-
Yeah, it's not gonna be worded like this at all. No, you will probably have to sign something.
Well, I make a motion for Cheryl to certify it and send it back to the Board of Elections.
That's good.
I'll second.
Your second? Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
I want you to do what's required by law. That's all.
That's what the motion says, right.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
The third thing is, I have a different deferred comp than what we already offer our employees. And if you look on the second page, you can see the difference between the two. There are some advantages to the new one. And I just wanted to let you know that I would like to give this to employees, be an option. And also, it is, would be available to part-timers too. And then you have your cash, month-to-date, year-to-date report, the July income tax report, and the mayor's court, which is a nice amount that's collected. Then you have the revolving loan list, the media com franchise fee statement. And that's all I've got.
Does anyone have any questions for Cheryl about all those reports that she just went through? Thank you. Dell, you were on the agenda at the beginning of the agenda. Would you like to come up to the podium now and address council?
Sure. I'll try to be brief and to the point. Thank you for allowing me to address a couple of intertwined issues. First being that, beings that water bills are paid a month behind. When someone moves, instead of their bill following them, I have to pay their bill. Not now, they did take the water off, but I still pay the base. If they move in the middle of May, then June comes along, and at the, I think it's at the end of June, when the bill comes, it kicks back to May, and then I have to pay May, instead of it following the person that moved down the street, that moved across town. They didn't skip, they moved across town. So I don't know if only I'm paying it or they're paying it also, but I don't think that's right, that I should have to pay it. I think their bills should follow them. But I especially don't think that it's right under the circumstances that landlords have shouldered the burden of what would be homeless people that would be up here on your doorstep using your bathrooms. Not by choice, but because they have no place to go. They lodge with another person that me or someone else has rented to. Well, then, we have this burden, and then when they move, you guys don't even take one more, one more times trash. Just one time, you don't take that trash. It was trash all along. Just because I put it out doesn't mean it wasn't trash all the months that they were lodging there. So I think it's time, under these circumstances, that everyone else share the burden that landlords have been doing by sheltering these people. We have been the shelter for the people that would, would have no place to go. And even Larry Haver out there at Nolte's, he did provide a service for those people. Some of them only live on seven hundred dollars a month. And if that place ever sells, those people are gonna have to have a place to go. So where are they going to go on seven hundred dollars a month? To pay the rent, pay the utilities, pay, pay all the things that have to be paid. They're going to be lodging with other people. And the other people they're going to be lodging with is somebody else that rents. They're gonna move in with them, and they're gonna stay with them. So that makes us the shelter for them.
But I think there's, there's rules and regulations for that too. If you have a renter, and you can, you can put that in your contract that they cannot have their mother-in-law live with them and stuff like that. You can enforce that kind of stuff.
Single family?
Right.
Easier said than done. Easier said than done. It just doesn't work that way.
It's hard to control.
Right, I know.
Yeah, it's very, very hard to control. But under these circumstances, I feel it's time for this, for the city to back off on punishing us by sticking us with that bill, which should have followed the guy down the street. All he did was move down the street, maybe or across town. I could tell you one right now, he moved across town. I get his last bill simply, simply because, because you're paying a month behind. When they read the end of June's bill, you're paying for May, you're not paying for June. An example, he moved in the middle of May. So then, at the end of June, it was, it was May's bill, and I got it. Instead of it following him down the street, the water was even added to it, but she did take the water off. And I just paid the twenty-five-dollar meter charge. But those meter charges, the way people, they're moving all the time. And it adds up. In a year's time, it adds up, twenty-five, 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 twenty-five. But that isn't even so much the point, even as much as... I feel a little like we're being punished. The big bad landlord, the big bad landlord. And it's not like some people think. They don't realize that even these little dumpy rentals cost about a thousand dollars a year just for the property tax. Just for the, so for the property taxes, about a thousand dollars a year, well, there goes at least two or three months' rent, right off the top. Not to mention all the repairs that we have because of the people that would be homeless, that you guys don't do your share. They would be homeless, they come in there, and then they may tear it up, they leave all that trash that won't be picked up. They do all of these things that we shoulder this alone. Well, I don't think we should shoulder it alone. I think it's time that everybody else step up to the plate and do their share. Do their share. Otherwise, if we do like you say, kick 'em out, kick 'em out, kick 'em out, they're gonna be up here washing their feet in your toilet. They're gonna, they're, no, well, maybe not. Maybe they won't wash their feet in your toilet, maybe they'll just move in. See, you're shaking your head over there.
Don't you have a deposit for all these people that you're renters?
Sometimes, sometimes you do and sometimes you don't.
After months billing, you can pay a twenty-five-dollar base rate that you could deduct from that and not give them their whole deposit back?
That deposit don't even come close to covering.
You don't have a twenty-five-dollar, you don't hold a twenty-five-dollar deposit for water bill?
No, I don't hold a twenty-five-dollar deposit for water bill.
You don't have a deposit of over twenty-five dollars?
Sometimes I do and sometimes I rent to them for no deposit.
I mean, that's not, I mean, that's not our rule, but-
It's a business choice.
That is a, absolutely, it is a business choice.
I think, from my major's point, you're talking about two totally separate issues.
Not to me, it's not.
The homeless problem has nothing to do with your water bill request. You may have a fundamental concern to do with the way the water bills are handled and when things are turned off in the middle of the month, you getting the bill instead of it following down the tenant, the tenant down the road. And I maybe could follow that argument and appreciate it. But the fact remains, if your tenants choose to let their friends or whoever move in who would otherwise be homeless, and then those tenants move out who were paying tenants or whatever, and you're only being asked to pay the twenty-five-dollar base fee, you're not being penalized because they had one or two, to use your term, homeless people living with them because you're not paying an increased rate. You're talking about the twenty-five-dollar base that would have been applicable even if just your paying tenant moved out, let alone any homeless people. So you're putting those two issues together, and they're really not an issue together. Some of that is potentially an issue to do with the way the water bills are handled, and maybe that needs to be looked at. And I, I don't know the details and the specifics of that. But the issue of, because they, you know, if Nolte's closes and people you're renting to are gonna let their friends and, you know, people that they associate with move in with them, the homeless problem obviously would be, would be a concern that would have to be dealt with. And maybe you feel a moral obligation to that, but you have no legal obligation to deal with those people. And as was mentioned in there, and I know it's not always easy to figure out who's staying where or who's not, but I know because I used to do it some, would evict people who had, for lack of a better term, squatters living with them that weren't authorized on the, on the tent, on the lease to be there and have seen them evicted before because they were above, you know, sometimes people would restrict it to, they would have you list in the agreement who was gonna live there. Sometimes I would see no more than four people or whatever. And if they were violating the terms of the lease, they're violating the terms of the lease, and that could be a- a ground to a victim. But your complaint about the water, and I'm not making an opinion on it right now, may be valid, but it has nothing to do with, because potentially homeless people are residing in the places where you're being penalized, because you're taking those people on. I mean, in reality, what you're saying is, because you're a landlord and leasing to people, when those people move, without even consideration of homeless people, you know, whoever your tenants are, when they move, if you get stuck with the $25 base fee, when they're just down the road, that's fundamentally unfair, that might be a valid argument. But I don't think it has anything to do with whether or not they've got people that they let move in, or didn't let move in, whether it's homeless people, or their mother-in-law, or their whoever. I mean, those are two separate issues.
My point is, is that we have provided a great service for the town, that has been a thankless job.
You have had a business. You haven't provided a great service, you have a business.
Both, both, both. We have a business, and as far as evicting, I want to get back to evicting, that takes several months. So there goes another three months' rent, right off the top. So it's not like you evict, you know, in two weeks.
No, I know, I know. Done thousands of them.
So, okay, we can treat it as two issues. I don't care how we treat it. We've got both of those issues. We've got both of those issues. I just felt, and still feel, that even though we have a business, that that should be taken into consideration, whether anybody appreciates the fact that we do it or not, and, you know, that maybe, you know, that they consider that we're not doing a service. If everybody thinks that blah, 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 everybody thinks we're not doing a service, that's a matter of opinion. I feel that we are doing a service. Like, I don't know if I finished my thought about Larry Haver. Larry Haver did a service out there at Nolte's for years, even though it was a mess. He did do a service for years, by keeping a roof over those people's head, that only bring in, like, $700 a month. Some of them, a lot of them, they all have their own disability, and then this, that, and the other, and that's another issue. But $700 a month is all they have, and he provided a cheap, bad roof, but a roof over their head, so that they weren't, didn't have a tent city in the park. Because it was on the news, kid you not, God is my witness, in California, they set up a tent city, and their town run them out, and they all sued, and they all got $10,000 apiece, because the city couldn't run them out. And we have, whether you want to call it a service or not, we have prevented this type thing from happening. It may not be appreciated, however, we did do it.
Would you find a complex like Southern Hills suitable living for homeless?
I think Southern Hills is wonderful. Many years ago, I lived in Southern Hills myself. I'm a commoner. I'm a commoner. I lived in Southern Hills myself. Yes, Southern Hills is wonderful, but on $700 a month, they can't afford Southern Hills.
It's based on income.
Well, not all of it, it is. They only have so many.
It's only $700, I mean...
Well, they only allow so many people.
Right.
Yeah, it wouldn't take them all on. I have people call me lots of times, and their income is like seven, I kid you not, $700 a month. And I don't rent to them, because there's no way they can pay the rent. They just can't do it. They can't do it.
I mean, landlords don't buy houses and rent them out, because they want to provide a service, they want people to live in there for free.
You're absolutely right, and I never said that.
They do it for a business aspect, to make money.
Absolutely, absolutely. I never said that. I never said that. But talking down to me, with all due respect, sir, does not make these issues right, and it doesn't make, even though I intertwine it, but you guys call it separate, talking down to me does not make it right, the way the water bill is done either, because I come back to the way the water bill is done, because I feel that it is intertwined for me. It is a renter that is involved in that.
Our water department, let's say Joe rents from you, and he has a water bill, and he leaves, and he goes down the street, and starts, he's got to start up a new water contract with the city. That passed bill is tracked by the water department. He just doesn't get to open up another account, in a different address. Dawn's following that, I mean, but there's a certain time when some of our tenants will leave town, and we can't track them, even though they owe us money for their water bill, and their base fee, and everything else. We can't find them. Once it gets to that point, then it falls back on the landlord.
You're absolutely incorrect on that. I had a tenant move out in May. He moved across town. In fact, he's a nice guy, I like him. I stopped, come by his house one day, I'd forgotten what it was for. Come on in, I want you to see the house. He shows me the house, you know, shows me around through the house. But I got his last bill. He lives on Smith, that was on Pearl Street, he lives on Smith Street now. I paid his last bill. No, he comes back to me.
The base rate of his last bill.
The base, yes.
The water use.
No, the water was on it.
It was on it.
It was on it, and she says, well, how do I know when the water was used? I said, I'll carry, I never, ever use the water. I'll carry water in a five-gallon bucket, is what I've told them, and I've wrote them letters for years. In fact, I'm sure Cheryl can attest to it, that I have wrote letters for years. The minute, the day they're behind, the next day, please shut it off.
Yeah, you have. You've been one of the most proactive landlords with...
And when I've always tried to help, tell them, you know, where it's at, who moved in, who moved out, I sometimes send the letters, go up there, or send theirs back, that they send to me. I've done everything that I can, and I just, you know, you guys don't agree with me, but I feel that we have done a service, by providing for the less fortunate, and I feel that, under the circumstances, everybody else needs to chip in a little.
Dahl, I appreciate you coming and sharing your opinion with council, and I don't, you know...
I've tried to talk to several of you, so, take it to executive session.
I don't want to get, we've always kind of got to go, but I guarantee, every general pickup we have, it's the rental. The people that don't have money, how do they have truckload after truckload of trash?
Because, you know, some people just don't take the trash out. I couldn't tell you how many times, when I provide a shed, I open the shed, and all the garbage bags come tumbling out. This garbage all along.
Furniture and mattresses.
Brand-new clothes.
Why are they buying all this stuff if they have no money?
There are places that provide them, furniture even.
But it's the same rental every time. That's what gets me with...
I know.
Poor people, yet they generate more trash than the other 90% of town probably.
I agree that they do generate a lot, but that trash that gets set out was trash all along, it just didn't get set out before. So it gets all set out at once.
I've seen Greg empty out rental houses, has brand-new children's clothes in it, 20 pieces of diapers that they got free somewhere, and, you know, just walks away from it all.
I have seen them leave the baby pictures behind, and the wedding pictures. I said, I can understand the wedding pictures, but the baby pictures?
Well, see, that's where I'm saying, we pick up the slack there, for that $14 a month, a lot of landlords get a lot of service for $14 a month, trash service. If we had to bill you for a dumpster, it'd be a lot more than $14 a month.
What's the 14 for?
Trash, garbage.
But the minute the tenant's gone, we don't get one extra pickup?
Well, if service has been cut off, no. What I'm just saying, to empty a house every four months, which some people seem to do, for $14 a month, that's a pretty sweet deal.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, every four months. And then that means that I lose a month's rent, or two, in the meantime. So it's not like some people want to think, big bad landlord. It's not exactly like some people think. Not to mention insurance, and this and that, and a whole bunch of other stuff, and the repairs.
Thank you, Dahl.
Thank you.
We'll take this under consideration, I guess, if there's anything to consider for...
Have Dawn explain how the billing system works, so that we all the council know about.
Is there any way we can, we were just talking, discussing that, is there any way we can do, not be a month behind?
Cheryl can explain this to you as well as anybody, but typically...
We don't pay a month behind.
Typically, when we know the person's moving out, we go read the meter out that day, and they're billed up to that point. And then it goes back in the landlord's name.
Right, and the water's still turned on, and they still use it, the remaining month, she gets the bill.
Whether you want to rent your house or not.
So the real question is, in the month that they move out in, who gets billed the minimum? The tenant that was there for the first two weeks, or the landlord that took it over for the second two weeks, or both?
No, not both.
Not both?
No.
That's, I mean, that's the question.
All right. Either way, you look at it, the landlord's taking the blunt.
No.
Yes.
That's a part of doing business, Ron, I'm sure.
It is part of doing business. There's an account like my superior, they don't even let, put in renter's name landlord, so we're fortunate, they can put it in somebody's name. They don't allow renters, the landlord has to pay.
Good idea.
We're doing the same thing. If Joe doesn't pay his rent, or pay his water, and it's in, whether it's in your name or not, you own the home, when the bill comes, you're paying it if he's behind. That's right. Just like I am, just like any landlord.
But Cheryl, it used to be that we continued to keep that on record, and if they came back to town, and they want to sign up for utilities, we made them pay that, right?
Yes, and a double deposit.
Well, now it's $200, so that helps a lot.
Oh, now if they come back, it's 400.
400.
Because we make them pay double.
Plus, I think Dawn said she just turned down a person for the third time, and that person was upset. That's unfair. Well, they stiffed us twice, so we're supposed to lay down and take it a third time? I mean, I'm sorry, at some point, as a taxpayer, I get a little tired of that attitude from renters. And also, you talked about the homeless, there is a shelter and defiance, if it gets to that point, down at Second Street, there's five counties. So, I mean, you feel bad for the people, but there is...
I don't have the authority to do that, any more than if you were mentally ill, then I would have the authority to do it. I wouldn't have the authority.
But they can go and apply.
Right, they should go and apply. I assume again, I don't know.
Yes.
But see, that's not my issue, to get them into a place like that. That's not, that's not my responsibility.
Because I've had them, I said, where am I going to go?
Or anything that I believe I do. I can't even do that.
Right. But you can suggest there is a place to wash their feet.
I truly know them. They know, they work a lot more than I know.
They do.
And there is... They work the system. They work, if they worked the job as hard as they worked the system, they'd have money.
Some do, and, you know, there's some that do, and some don't. But on the water issue, you know, you guys are between two and three times the national average. I would certainly hate to see everything, that you wouldn't give anybody any rent or water, that I would have to go in my name, because you're between two and three times the national average.
National average.
The national average, national average water bill. Like I talked to somebody in another state, and their water bill's like $30.
If you compare with a larger city, that's probably correct.
Well, small towns too, small towns too, because I know people in different states, and they'll have like a $30, $40 water bill.
Does that water, sewage, and trash pickup?
Absolutely.
Well, see, you also have to compare situations. That'd be like a fire department with 100 people's going to have a lot more expense than a fire department with 25 people.
Well, this is the average. That would be, that would probably be big towns, little towns, all.
I've never seen where we're in that upper... I've seen the water bills in Antwerp, Paulding, Sherwood, and more lower, just around the area.
That one, yeah, I think...
Well, they're too high too, Ken.
We are, oh, I... But we're doing the best we can to keep the prices down, but can't run as a deficit. We can't subsidize it.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, let's see here, then we're on the mayor's report. So you all have in your packet an invitation, I hope you all have in your packet an invitation to the annual back-to-school breakfast, it's coming up, August, Thursday, August 17. You need RSVP for that, if you want to go.
When's the breakfast?
Oh, well, that's, that's the deadline for the date. That's the deadline for RSVP, August 24, okay.
I'll be ready for you guys then. And there won't be any breakfast.
I was just reading the highlighted area, but yeah, you're right, I'm wrong. Yep.
Harry thought he was going to be at school early.
Yeah. So then, the minutes are in the packet from the first potential EMS district meeting. We had a nice discussion about it, and right now, all the departments are going to go back and talk to their volunteers, and see what their concerns are, and it's still, I mean, we still really need the volunteers, it's not that we're going to be doing away with the volunteers. Ron Beverley was there as police and fire committee chairman, I assumed. Do you have anything to add to it, Ron?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We're going to meet again at the end of...
Of course, or anybody, not really sure if they want to do it, or by positive.
Pretty much, everybody's waiting to see, we need to put together a plan at the next meeting, how it will operate.
Everything was just, you know, in the formative stages, was a little vague to be making any commitments or anything.
I mean, there was some genuine interest.
They're probably all looking at us, being the biggest, most resources, and stuff like that, so I suspect if we were on board, I can't speak for those other people I was at the meeting, I think a lot of them would be on board. And the way I looked at it, I was thinking about it after we left, I mean, the model, the general model of that is, is no different than what we're doing here, by having a couple of people full-time to cover the gaps, and then supplementing with volunteers. The difference is, you'd have a couple of people full-time, two, three full-time, for the whole region, and then be supplementing with the volunteers from all the different departments.
What I thought was really nice is, all the small towns, their district in Henry County, south of the river, so, Dusher, Holgate, McClure, they all already had EMSs and volunteer departments, so they kept their, you know, EMSs there, and they had their volunteers respond. But the full-time person that was on call would then go to the scene, from a centralized location in that area, that I think they said was near Camlar. So the volunteers responded right away, but then you always had that full-time person that was following up. The volunteers, the volunteers took the call, they got there, and if they wanted to just turn it over to the full-time person, because they want to go back to bed, or go to work, or something, then that person was asked to stay and help, otherwise, the full-time person was just kind of a backup, is that Cody was there, did you...
Helping, helping out.
Kind of...
It's a full-time crew, not just an individual person, basically. Or the way they work it is, like a paramedic unit, so if it's an advanced run that they can't, they can't handle, they would give it to the full-time crew. Or, yeah, say both of them, just want to go back to work.
You guys are painting a pretty rosy picture. I mean, the guy told you that he only had the one spot covered with one full-time, and the volunteer hadn't got there yet, and that's for the entire area. Personally, I guess, I think, my thought is, Hicksville's going to be, they're going to come to us, because we've got money. I think Hicksville's better off just doing what we do. When I drop over with a heart attack in the middle of this floor, I want the response to be three to five minutes, and not 27 minutes, like some of his response times that he was telling, you know, by the time they got...
Want to vote on it?
One place, next, and 27 minutes.
Make sure you're being nice to the guys next door, then.
Thank you, everybody. So then, we also had our first CRA meeting, and there's minutes in your packet about that. We had, Jerry Hayes came and kind of explained what some options were to us, and we have another meeting planned for August 24th at 5:00. I guess we need to establish what area in town we want for the area, and what kind of percentages, I don't know, is tax abatement the right word? kind of percentages, um, I don't know, is tax abatement the right word?
It's probably not the proper word, but it gets the point across.
Yeah, and for how many years?
Exemption.
Pardon me?
Exemption.
Oh, exemption, okay.
Different than the rehiring.
All right. So, and then, I think Cheryl Smith is interested in retiring, rehiring, and part of that process is to, uh, announce that to council, and I guess we need to decide if you would rehire her, so, um, does, does someone wanna take that to the personnel committee to discuss that? Beverly, Bassett, and Headley? If you have any questions about it, or if you don't, just...
Well, if, if you need an answer, I would be supportive of her retiring and rehire. How soon, Cheryl? What are you thinking?
Tomorrow.
I wish you not just retired. You know, I'm an advocate of retire and rehire, but in Cheryl's case, we have a great financial officer, as we call her now, clerk treasurer. Um, I think it behooves us to, to honor her request and let her retire and, and go on and let her rehire. Yeah, I think we gotta come back to the table and figure out the economics of the thing, but I wouldn't have a problem with her doing that.
I'm definitely in favor of it. Is there any objection? So is that discussion good enough for your minutes to give to the public employees' retirement system? All right. So, I guess, I, the Defeith County Health Department came here and, and met with me, um, regarding possible food insecurity in Hicksville because of Klein's supermarket closing. And, uh, it was kind of an interesting meeting. We discussed other areas where people can get their fresh fruits and vegetables. Oh, that was their concern, though, was fresh fruits and vegetables, so, um, they were updating, um...
Rock Street?
You wanna shut her down?
Same fault.
So sorry.
They were updating some reporting that they do, and studies that they do, and so... And I just wanna remind people, if you have a bicycle, you're supposed to have a license on your bicycle, and, and if we don't wanna enforce that, maybe SHIELD's ordinance committee wants to remove that too. But the benefits, folks, of having your bicycle license is if your bicycle's found around town or on, in the park, the police department knows who to return it to. And, so, the bicycle license is a dollar, and the process used to be that you just took it out to the police department, and they would give you your bicycle license. And to my knowledge, none of that has changed.
No, it hasn't.
It's a buck, but it will get your kid's $100 bike back to him if it's stolen and found in the park somewhere. Otherwise, that bike's gonna go to a public auction next year, and someone's gonna buy it for two bucks. So, bicycle license...
And I don't know if a lot of people are aware that they even do that.
I forgot.
Huh? You didn't know?
Say, we've talked about, we have a, we have a lot of bikes, and they don't have licenses on them.
So would it be safe to tell people that if their child or someone has a bicycle, a bicycle missing right now, they can go out to the police department and look through your inventory to see if their bike's there?
That's why we have inventory up right now.
Okay, if they can, if they can, yeah. Okay. So, let's see what this is, this has been a long time since I read this. To whom may concern, which is council, thank you all so much for the donations. I'm extremely excited to represent Hicksville this coming weekend at the He O'Brien Youth World Leadership Congress. The chance to attend a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and I'm looking forward to meeting people from other countries and backgrounds, hearing the speakers, and hearing about all the other ways to be a leader. I'll be spending a week at the, um, Loyola University in Chicago with other, with over 400 other delegates. I can't wait. Thank you, Angela Betts. And I just gave her some of our pads and villages. She just wanted stuff with the village of Hicksville on it, so we just gave her some pencils and writing tablets and stuff, and that's what her thank you's for. And, let's see here, we have pickleball lines at the tennis court now, and some people know how to play pickleball, and some people don't, but I would like to see in the future someone come to teach people how to play pickleball. And that is the last thing I have to say tonight.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.